Our utilities and poverty contracts. Together, that's 95% of our budget. And so, a lot of our budget is what I consider nondiscretionary. We don't have a choice to pay utility bills and electric bills and things like that. And unless we want larger class sizes, we have employees that we, most of us, most of the community and most of the board priorities and most of the employee priorities are for smaller class size, not larger class size. So, a lot of our budget is driven by our FTEs and classroom size needs. Before I get into the budget, I'll stop there for just a second, see if there are any questions so far, where we are and what our purpose is here tonight. Absolutely.
Dr. Scott, I don't know if you heard that, but we're holding on for a minute. There's a live stream sound issue that we're trying to resolve.
Yes, I heard that. I was just waiting because I do have questions, but I'm not sure if these are on our page yet.
Okay, yeah, I think you-
That's what the draft budget priority worksheet.
Okay, well, we'll get to it when we get to the specifics. We'll see if you had something in general.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
All right. Dr. Scott, do you have any general questions, or do you want to wait till we get into detail of the budget?
Yeah, I can wait. It's just a few questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So, given that, we can look at the budget that is very similar, there are very minor changes from our May 25 budget that we presented and that you gave first reading to. The dollar amounts are slightly off. The total budget was about, is, was about $314.6 million back in May. We've had to adjust that slightly due to some updates from the county and the state, so it's about $314 million, .2 billion. The total requested amount that we had asked last time was about $313 million .4, and we're asking, the total increase is about $13 million .0 for this total increase. On your second page of your budget document, you'll see the line item requests that make up for that increase of $13.0 million. And we discussed this briefly last time, but I wanted to make sure that what we've looked and we've prioritized these budget request, budget request line items. And the first, one, two, three, four, five, six are all mandated by the state. The estimated increase in employer's share of health insurance, the increase in employer's share of state retirement, our 1% increase in our contribution, the teacher salary step increase for last year. If you remember, the teacher salary step increase that was mandated by the state that was a retroactive increase that we had to pay by June 15th, that was funded with one-time money. The state has, we have to pay that increase again, but the state didn't fund it. But that's going to cost us about $2.3, $2.4 million. The teacher step increase for next year, 21, 22, required by the state appropriation bill, increase in teacher's salary schedule of $1,000 per cell. Each salary scale, each salary schedule cell that a teacher is in, certified employee is in, will get a $1,000 increase.
Dr. Miley?
Dr. Holmes.
Yes, I'm glad that you said that because I think there was a lot of confusion about the 2% that actually came from the state for the retroactive part. But I'm glad that you're putting it out there, and it needs to be said that they are going to, the teachers that did not get that retroactive money, if they're in a certain particular cell, they will get that $1,000 increase. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's what I needed to say. Thank you.
The state also, this is a little bit different than our last that we brought to you in May. This was, we found this out and was identified, we did not know it at that time, but the state had mandated a 5% increase in bus driver salaries. So, we included that as a line item. We are getting some funds for that, but it may not be enough, but we budgeted that line item. Then after that, we've got an increase in annual operations contracts. This is our normal operations activities, such as our custodial and landscaping contracts that require an annual increase. We've budgeted a potential increase in our SOR, SOR contract with the sheriff's department. And then there are two items that we are, are budgeting in a negative way. That is, we've seen a decrease in our budget, utilities budget that we think we can have that will be on a recurring basis, and so that would save us $1.2 million. That's why it's in red. And we have also, since the charter school has closed, or will be closing June 30th, we, that contract with the charter school cost the district about $895,000. That's $895,000 in our recurring budget that we will not need to spend to the charter school. So, we've increased, we've got that listed. And then these items are slightly different than the budget that we brought you back in May because we did some in-depth analysis and listening to our departments. We had several departments, especially special ed, that were out of compliance with the state department. And we have plenty of people here in the room that can explain that better than I can, but in essence, the caseload of those employees was higher than the state guidelines, and we were out of compliance. So, we felt it was important to avoid getting sanctioned by the state and that we needed to get back in compliance in those special ed, very important classrooms and caseloads. So, we have, as you see, the special ed teacher, the multi-category special ed teacher, a resource teacher, the low incident support teacher and three TAs. One of the things that is, that is, we need to remember that, just about, I think, it may not, can be corrected by our team back here, but in special ed, you just usually need at least one teacher's aide. In some special ed classes, you'd need more than one teacher's aide. So, when we do have a teacher that's out of compliance and we add a new FTE to help address that out of compliance issue, we'll need additional TAs in that classroom to help. So, you'll see those TAs in there, the resource teacher and TAs, low incident support teacher plus three TAs, and the moderate special ed teacher plus two As. Again, we're out of overcapacity and out of compliance. And we're also out of compliance in ESOL teachers. So, these are, you can call them priorities, you can call them wish lists. We look at them as mandatory addressing out of compliant issues and need to be addressed. We also have, the next couple of lines were in our budget presented to you back in May, but they were a higher priority, but in fact, they are discretionary. They are not mandated by the state. These are things that, whom we have, when the state mandates a teacher salary increase or step, what this district has done for years, certainly ever since I've been here, is we provide that same benefit and increase in step to all employees. So, those two lines, the all non-teacher salary step for last year, that just was cut back in the middle of June, and the all, all non-teacher salary step increase for next year. Those two line items cost about a little over a million dollars apiece. And then the final, the next one is the increase to all other salary schedules of a 2% increase. There are people that are not on the salary schedule. Let's see. A high priority, both with the board, employees, and Dr. Davis and team, was that we need to get more competitive with our lower step teacher starting rate, starting rate, starting salaries, easy for me to say. In our salary study last year, it identified that we were very competitive in our higher step areas, but in our first four, five, 10 steps, especially at the BA level, we were non-competitive. So, this line item is to raise our starting salary schedule for a BA and BA plus 18 by up to $41,000 a year. It's roughly about 39 or so now, I believe. So, that would be a substantial increase in that starting salary to be more competitive and try to attract additional talent. The last four are full-time instructional assistant at Center for Inquiry, district-level interpreter for special ed, diversity, and for communications. All three departments would share a district interpreter and translator because of the volume of translation that we have increasingly had to do, and we need that translator. Bilingual teacher to assist with dual-lingual immersion program at EL Wright. This is the dual immersion program at Polo Road that was begun four, five years ago, and that cohort of students is moving to EL Wright, and there's not adequate language teacher and resources at EL Wright. So, that's to help fill the gap for those, for that cohort that was moving from, that will be moving from Polo Road. And then the last item is one that we have, will complete our benchmark program in terms of all schools, and will, that's about a $40,000 increase for all, the last seven schools and three centers to pay for the benchmark, benchmark for those, for those schools. And with that, I'll pause for a second and see if there's any questions.
Board members' questions? Dr. Holmes? No? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a few questions.
All right, Dr. Scott.
Yes, either Dr. Davis or Dr. Miley can address numbers 26 and 27, I would just combine those two. We're talking about upgrading to HR positions, to HR specialists, are those that we already have in the district and we're just changing the name, or someone can explain that?
I'm sorry, we couldn't understand exactly, they're not line item by number, so can you, and we couldn't understand the line item.
We are not on that-
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not on that, we're not on that page, actually.
Oh, we're not on that page, Dr.-
That's the expanded beyond zero mil-
Oh, okay.
-page. We were on the second page of the budget document. Third page of the budget, yeah, other than the cover page.
All right.
Oh, okay, so you don't want questions from that page yet?
We haven't gotten there yet, so we can bring it back up when we get to that.
Okay.
Did you have anything on this, on the-
Yeah, I just saw, I saw some of those on there. Okay, my apologies, I'll wait until we get to that page.
That's okay. Other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Agostini.
I have a few questions, thank you. I was curious to see, thank you so much for your presentation. It almost seemed from the first reading of the budget to the second reading of the budget that the decreased utilities budget has, will be, will be saving twice as much money as we initially anticipated. Went from about $700,000 to 1.2 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, I mean, is there a reason or an explanation why there's such a huge difference between last month and this month?
We just did more analysis.
Okay. And then, I understand the last three FTEs, and I understand the need for the first group, but are they going to certain schools? Do we know what schools these FTEs are going to? Has that been designated? For the, you're talking about the multi-category special ed teacher and TA.
I'm not sure I can answer that, but yes?
We identified two schools in my first meeting. Good evening. Yes, ma'am, we have identified some schools in collaboration with the planning office, and we, you know, the materials and everything that we would need for the classes, we would just need the staff.
Okay, so, do we know how long that these schools or programs have been out of compliance?
We just went through the pandemic year. The numbers were increasing the year before, but because the students were not going to be on campus for the most part, we just went through this, just one school year, but the numbers have been creeping up for about the past three years.
Okay, thank you for, and I'm finished with special, those questions.
Yes, ma'am.
How many bus drivers do we have? Do we know that?
200 and a, 200 or so?
Okay. And I'm curious, why did we not, because we had a long discussion last, at the last reading about this, it's no longer a priority to offer the incentives.
Which incentive?
We removed that.
Which incentive?
The bus driver incentives.
Well, it's on the, it's on the expanded list, but once we realized and found out that the state had mandated a 5% increase, it took pressure off the need to do the incentive package.
Okay, so now we're paying them more-
I'm sorry?
So, now we are paying them more. We will be, we will be paying the bus drivers.
Yes, ma'am.
That was a question that I had last time. Are we paying them adequately?
Well, the state is mandating that we give them all a 5% raise.
Yes, okay. And then, my other question, my final question would be about the SROs and how many we have of those.
We have 23 SROs under that contract. We have four additional SROs under contract with the sheriff's department. However, those are paid by direct grant from the state department of education to the, to the Richland County Sheriff's Department. The funds don't even flow through us, but our contract is with the sheriff for those four. So, we have a total of 27, but the contract that that increase addresses is for 23 SROs.
Okay, so we've got, we're being asked for an $87,000 increase for basically 23 of the-
Yes, ma'am.
SROs, employees of the sheriff.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I have one question. Dr. Miley, you said on the bus driver increase that we budgeted that because we don't know exactly how much the state's going to give us, so there's the potential that they would, that we might not have to pay the full 350 from our budget. Is that correct?
I think we actually may have included-
So far, that's what we're getting.
Yeah, so far, we're getting about half of it.
Okay, so that, so this is another half to what's being provided by the state.
Correct.
350, okay.
And again, back, back to the incentive idea, we felt like, and the incentive package is still important and is still a hopeful list, but we felt like the priority for the incentive package wasn't as high a priority, given that we were also giving them the 5% raise. So, that was, it's still important, but it's not as important when we're also giving them a step and a 5% raise.
All right. Any other questions? Okay.
We'll be glad to answer any of the questions on the last two pages of the budget document, Exhibit A and Exhibit B, but those are really boring, and we're glad to go over them with you. They deal with the county millage rate and the EFA calculation, but be glad to go over those if you'd like. But if not, we can move on to the page that-
I have one question on that.
Ms. Agostini.
Is it your, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, thank you. Is it your recommendation that we not do the 8%? Or, Dr. Davis, is it the district's recommendation to the board?
To the-
For the millage.
You mean the mills, mills rate increase? The zero mil?
Yes.
Well, I'll answer that question. We did not make a recommendation. We were asked to bring back to you a budget that included, included all of the information of what we were, what we needed, and to also give you the line item information to see where the mills were. So, at this time, administration didn't, has not made a recommendation for what the board would ask county council for. We've been informed that county council, I believe, has had their second or third reading-
Third.
Their third reading, and at this time, they have passed that third reading with the zero mills. So, if we go back to them with a millage increase request, they would have to amend that, and it appears as if they will not necessarily do that. But we're not sure, but we have the ability to ask for an amendment. Am I correct, Dr. Miley?
Correct.
If this district decides, or the board decides to do that. But we have not made a recommendation. We were asked to give you all of the things that we need, which is an extensive list, but we tried to prioritize those things by starting out with the things that will bring us into compliance, and then those things that are a high priority for the school district, and then those things that will allow the school district to function at a more premier level, and that's what we're presenting to you all today.
All right, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that.
I haven't, I've dealt with the county council for 30 years or so, and at this position for the last eight or nine, I'm not sure I've ever seen the county council more of a consensus about a zero millage increase for any one. So, the appetite at this county council, we will have, we can go back and try for amended budget at some point. I think that's, if we need to, we should, but we'll have to make a real good case, in my opinion. That's not the district's opinion or Dr. Davis's opinion. The additional sheet, the one that Dr. Scott had asked about a few minutes ago, was based on our analysis of what a zero mil increase would do. We prioritized those first 25 items, and they, the zero millage increase would provide funds up to that line item of 25. That's the same one that's in the budget document that we just went through. We also said, well, what if we had additional millage, and what could we do with that additional millage, and what additional requests could we fund? And so, as a backdrop, every year, we, every budget cycle, whether it's $12 million of new money, or $15 million of new money, 11, or whatever we end up with, we usually have about twice that much needs in the district. Last year, before the pandemic, we had, I think, $15 million the year before, and we had 31, we had $15 million to spend, and we had $31 million of new requests. This year, we, I think we had about $25 million of needs in the district. So, we can make a list really long of all the needs in the district, and if we had the resources, it would be great, we could do it. So, what we did was take all those other additional needs that have been identified by departments throughout the district, and list those and prioritize those. And I will take a moment of personal privilege and say that that is one of the most difficult things, I think, involved in this budget process, is looking at all the needs of the district. None are frivolous, none of the requests are foolish, are big wish lists, they're things that the district needs, and telling people, no, we don't have the funds for that request, and yes, we have the funds for this request, is not a fun job, and it's hard. But it's, it's a group effort to get input from a variety of perspectives, departments, and other people in senior staff, and so it is a difficult process. So, that's the process we went through to get this, to the draft budget priorities worksheet that you have, and it reflects an increase of five mills, and what five mills would fund if we were to get five mil increase from the county council. And it identifies multiple additional needs that the district feels are important to prioritize and would love to fund if they had the funds. The 26 and 20, y'all can read, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but the first two, 26 and 27, our HR department has had, has been understaffed, and understaffed for the last several years, for many years, and they are a critical component in making this district premier. Getting people hired, advertising, retaining, recruiting, and processing, onboarding, I think Shelley and I were just looking at it, we onboard about anywhere between 400 and 500 new people every year. It's a huge task. And so, those first two line items are for additional resources and our HR department. The next three line items, actually the 28, 29, 30, and 31, are all finance-related. The risk manager position is somewhat risk, is somewhat compliance, legal issues related, but it's also a finance position. The number 32 is an avid coordinator. There are other people in the room that can speak better to this, but our avid coordinator has been combined for the last several years and has grown over time as avid, has become more and more a key component in this district, and it's been done by the same person that was doing our CATE programs. And that is a two-person job, having been done by one person over the last several years. That person is retiring and leaving the district, and it's clear that this is, there's a need for a CATE director and an avid director, coordinator or director. And so, that is a very important component of this district, and we listed that as priority number 32. Special education and teaching assistant at CFK and CFK North. This would be to provide that special education teaching assistant. If you combine those two campuses, there is, we look at them as centers, but CFK North and CFK, CFK combined are a small elementary school, and they're just in two different sites, and so they need additional resources. 34, we, we think this is extremely important for recruiting and retaining nurses. The worth of our nurses, I don't think, needs to be discussed anymore after the COVID process and the COVID clinic and everything else they do, but this would be to put them on the teacher's salary schedule, which is pretty much the norm throughout the state. We're one of the exceptions, and it would provide some additional pay increases for teachers and put them on the teacher's salary, salary schedule, and be a better recruiting and retain, retention tool, in our, in our opinion. We need additional nurses, three FTEs for Blackwood Academy and Spring Valley and Blackwood High School, and a bus, the bus driver recruitment program, which we had listed earlier, and then the compensation for specific summer PD for non-contract days. This district had at one time paid teachers that were not during their contract days. That is, this is a teacher, certified teacher during the summer, not on their contract days, who went to a PD, and we paid them to go to that PD. We stopped that during probably the recession back in '09, '10. This is not for someone who's being paid that day anyway. That's why we make it clear that it's a non-contract day, so we're not paying them twice. But these would be teachers during the summer who we encourage, and they want to do PD, and it's a non-contract day, and we would like to try to get back to that practice of being able to pay them for that day of PD. I'll stop there and be glad to answer any questions related to those additional from 26 through 39 priorities.
Dr. Scott, you had some questions. Dr. Scott, are you still there?
Yes, yes, I'm here. The questions I had, really, thank you so much for that report. Just want to ask, numbers 26 through 37, is that in the third priority list? And the reason why I'm asking, because I see that we have two bus driver recruitment that's at the bottom, are they a particular order, or you guys just listed the items, but no particular order as to which is the most important?
Dr. Scott, they are in a prioritized order.
Okay, so that's how they are. Okay, well, with that, wanted to ask about the HR position. I know we have more HR folks working now than we've had in the past, and our numbers hadn't really increased. With those positions, are we just changing the names, like the HR specialist, representative? Are we just changing the names for benefit, the HR specialist, or are we adding?
I believe these are, these are upgrades. So, these are changes in-
These are upgrades, okay.
Yeah, these are changes in current title to do something else. Yes, ma'am.
Current title and current duties.
Yeah, current titles and duties.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. And then, the other question, hold on, let me go back to, oh, yes. With the admit and the director of financial services, that $100,000, does that include benefits, or is that the salary that that person would be making?
It does include fringe benefits.
It includes benefits, okay, that's what I wanted to know. And then, the final question, and Dr. Davis, maybe you- And then the final question, and Dr. Davis, maybe you can answer this for me. If we approved all 37 with that five mill increase, would we be able to continue with these positions after next year? Would we have the funds for those positions?
Yes, we'll be able to continue with the positions that we're asking for next year if this, if this budget is approved.
Okay. Those are the only questions I have. Thank you.
Other board members?
I actually had one question. Why do we stop at five when our cap is seven?
What's the next one?
Actually, these are not fun meetings, not this one, but the ones when we do this. I'm trying to remember the discussion. It may have been part of, that we had this last discussion as the county was passing a zero mill increase, but we felt like the five mills got us very deep in our priority list.
Yeah.
And we felt that was a-
We know that we can't get everything that we need in one budget year and so we spent many hours reviewing all the requests and we prioritize each request multiple times. And at the end, this was the number that we came up with, with the things that we felt like, these are the things we absolutely had to have in order to continue to provide what we have come to known as the expectations of services in Richland to primary, premier educational experience for our students. So there are, sure, other things that we could add on here, but we felt like these are the things that really touch what we've heard from the board and what administration think was really, thought was important as well. We wanted to address teacher pay and compensation in our district and we've done it in multiple ways. We really need to address the salary scale in our district, which will give our starting teachers and several teachers up the, the teacher's pay scale, an increase in pay as well, which will help us in our efforts for recruitment and retention. We wanted to address the issues with our nurses and finally get them on the appropriate pay scale so that we can continue to recruit and retain nurses, as we all stated. And so there are a few other things where we didn't think that those things were necessarily at the highest priority level right now and so that's why we didn't add them on.
And I understand that, I guess, just as a board member, I mean, ultimately, we have the final responsibility to determine what the final budget is. And I know, Dr. Davis, we've talked about administration, we task you with achieving certain things and so it's certainly a fine, a delicate balance between what the board wants and what administration wants, but it is ultimately our final decision. And so to be able to see what the priorities were through the cap is an important thing for me, to understand what the items are that we're not doing because we didn't ask for the full seven mills or, or if we did ask and we didn't get it, what county council wasn't allowing us to achieve by not doing that. So I, I don't want you to take it as a super criticism, but for me, I think it is important that the board be able to see through the full cap what it is that we may or may not be doing. And so that, that's just an important part for me and part of our responsibility to be able to, to see that. And I know this year has been off. I mean, I, everything has flipped. From when I first started on the board, we always knew, we had a better idea of what the state was doing and zero idea of what county council would end up doing or what that money looked like. And this year, while we still don't know the state, but they've been a little more stable and county council's flown right through. So it's, I know it's different, but I do want to make sure that we, as a board, have the opportunity to weigh in on the budget and all the way up to the max.
Mr. Manning, can I ask something?
Dr. X, do you want to?
I'll yield too. I'll yield, Dr. Scott.
And I wanted to say, I'm very careful about going to the cap because when we do that, that is increasing the taxpayer taxes and also with us just getting a bond referendum, we need to be very careful about adding the cap because our constituents and the taxpayers, we're very generous with passing the bond to make sure that we had everything we need to back and say, okay, we need more and more. We don't want to be like the book, if you give a mouse a cookie, because it's not for the dinner. So I want to make sure that we are the stewards of the taxpayers' money.
And Dr. Scott, please, don't, don't understand that I was asking to go to the cap. What I was asking was to see the items up to the cap because we may determine as a board that there are items that did not make the seven mill cut, that even though, you know, the district stated that that was a lower priority, we may have the will to say we, for instance, the nursing item. I mean, that may be something that this board says we need to increase nurse pay and while it would certainly be a back and forth with administration for other priorities, but that, that isn't our purview to do that. And so I just want the information, not to say I'm going to act on it, but to have the information so that we have everything available to us to understand the full picture.
Right. I mean, I understand that the nurses came with the five, and I'm truly in support of increasing that because I think they need that pay increase as well as I do believe that those schools that we have listed, they do need that full-time nurse. So I want them, actually at the top, that's why I asked the original question to Dr. Davis, where they listed in priority, because I noticed that they were almost at the bottom of the list, so I would really like to move them up, but I just wanted to make sure that we don't make anyone feel like we don't think their area as important as the other areas. But we do know, especially with COVID, that we do need to move the nurses up to that as possible.
Dr. Davis?
I'm just thinking on, in for future, in the future, how we should do this so that the board can get, one, to be involved in the input that, have the level of input that they want in the budget and at the same time, that administration is able to present the board with what they requested. And so we made administrative decision, I made administrative decision, that based on the priorities beyond a five mill, one, it wasn't an extremely large amount of money from 14,691 to 15,281. So there are many priorities that we would not have been able to fund beyond the five mills, but it was definitely, we definitely will make sure that we provide you all with all of the requests and draw the line at the full millage and prioritize that and make sure that the board has that. So if there are things that you want to move around in priority that you all, that the seven of you all will agree are priorities, then we would do so. What we wanted to do was present you with what we thought were the administrative needs of the school district as we see them as a priority for operations and for educational purposes for the students, but we would definitely make sure. And I think we can get you the rest of the items for consideration if you choose to move them up or down prior to making a decision on, on this budget. Is that correct, Dr. Miley?
That is correct. And in fact, we can, the two mills would add about $650,000 additional funding. And one of the recommendations that finance has, that we feel that to do our job correctly, we need to, we still feel like, as you, as you, as you've witnessed over the last several years, we've had some substantial budget surpluses. Some of those surpluses are pretty straightforward. We probably will have a surplus and leftover funds from travel and conferences because nobody went to travel and conferences during COVID. We will probably have additional funds left over from teacher subs in classrooms over the last 12 months because we didn't have anybody in classrooms, I mean, we didn't need sub teachers. So that kind of a surplus, we don't think is a recurring surplus because when the teach, when the kids come back and teachers come back, we'll still need those subs and we'll still need travel and conferences once things get back to normal. So we wouldn't want to reallocate or say, oh, that's a permanent reduction in our, in our budget. But there are some items that we feel very strongly that we can identify and say, here's some positions that were reclassified or here's some positions that never got filled or here's some savings that we feel are recurring that we could reallocate. That is, they're still in the budget. They're in the budget from previous years, we're not spending them and we, which has led to our surpluses. And we feel like it would be the best interest of the district to reallocate those instead of having surpluses, to have adequate resources that the district needs, that long list of needs that we have here that we don't, couldn't fund without a millage increase. And what we would, would like to do is have that direction from y'all to do that and come back with a recommendation on, well, not only is here what the seven, seven mills would fund, but here's some items that we feel that the district could use and to, to take advantage of those recurring resource, recurring surplus funds to, to meet needs in the district that we currently can't meet with our current budget. And that's one of our recommendations to Dr. Davis and we think that, that that's appropriate direction for us to take, to do that for the district and come back with a recommendation that could address some of these needs, whether it would be up to seven mills or three mills or whatever, but it would be above what our current budget zero mill would be. And we feel very strongly that we can safely do that. Obviously, just picking a number, if we had a $5 million surplus, we wouldn't want to reallocate all that because there might be some of that due to a mild winter and savings for energy, it might be due to travel restrictions and, oh, we don't want to reallocate those, but we feel that there are some that we can identify safely and reallocate to address some of our needs that aren't getting funded.
And Dr. Davis, I appreciate your, your comments. I know we've done it and again, this year is just with COVID and everything else, I mean, things are just not normal this year. But in the past, we have looked at this less sooner in the process so that there could be that discussion between the board and administration if there were items that the board felt strongly about and then also hear from you to make sure we understood the impact if we were to change some things around. So I, but I didn't want to lose that point going forward, that I think that that's an important process for us.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini?
I'm, I have a question. I don't want to interrupt.
You're fine.
So I just want to understand what Dr. Miley just said. So we're, to me, what I heard, and just please clarify because I, if I misunderstood, we haven't gone back through our budget to see what things are eliminate or reduce cost or the expectation of the budget. There are items from previous years that we still have standing on the budget and we haven't gone back to review to see if in fact, for example, we need $1 million for something, our record might be, you know, for the past five years that we're using $900,000 instead and we're not taking those funds out and putting them back in here.
We haven't to date, no ma'am.
I'm sorry?
We have not to date, correct.
That's not a standard practice that we do?
To some degree, just for example, the utilities, you can see clearly we've gone back and looked and, and the reason the numbers change is because we've gone back and looked at trends and also evaluated, you know, what potential increases could we have in this coming year. So bottom line, it's, it's truly an educated guess, our budget, that's, it's an educated guess to say, are we going to continue to save the amount that we have in the past few years? With utilities and the pieces we put in place, we felt very strongly, we've seen that trend for several years now, so we do feel like that's a pretty good guarantee. We can go ahead and budget that. Now, we'll have to monitor it as we go this next year or two, if there's any changes in, you know, temperature or weather, we'll have to revisit that. So that's, that's an example of where we've done that. I think where it gets very complicated, and as we stated earlier, a huge portion of our budget is salary and fringe. Trying to nail down how much of those dollars is a recurring savings is very challenging to begin with. It's extremely challenging when you have the last couple of years we've had, where you've got a pandemic. So you know that some of those cost savings relate to the fact that we've not paid the same level of overtime, we've not needed substitutes, like, so we've looked at certain areas and been able to easily identify those. I think it is an ongoing process and absolutely we do minor shifts, but what we're talking about is a much larger shift, not something necessarily we would come in and, and just do on a regular basis. We're looking big picture over multiple years. So we've done some of that. I think what Harry's saying is we haven't gone in and said, we're saving this many million dollars in this category, so we're just going to use it this other way. That's the conversation we're having now. I think there have definitely been some areas we've gone through and analyzed and identified and you're seeing the results of some of that and some of our discussion. So I wouldn't say we haven't done it at all. I just think there's, there's a lot of layers, especially with the salary and benefits piece that are moving parts.
Thank you. Yeah, no, that, no, you've all answered it. Thank you.
All right. Board members, other questions or comments? Okay. Dr. Miley?
All right. Thank you. We will do that analysis. The last piece is, and I'll start first, is that what we are planning to do, the COVID relief funds. Well, just tell me. I can't hear you. I'm sorry. Thank you. It takes the village. The, you have a board retreat coming up, I believe in the mid to late July time and what we'd like to do is come, if, if you're interested and would like us to do it, come and have a much more in-depth discussion about all the COVID relief funds. There have been the COVID relief funds, the CFR, there's been the CARES Act, that was S R one, and then there was the S R two CARES Act and we're soon to see an S R three funding. They're all slightly different, they all have slightly different timelines and different requirements, different reporting requirements. And one of the things we have been suggesting to Dr. Davis is we just about need a full-time accountant just to keep up with the CARES Act, but CARES Acts. So, but what we want to do is come and give you a full explanation of all those, the types of uses each one is allowed, what we've done, what we've recommended for each one of those uses and the timelines, et cetera, and our plans, more importantly, our plans for S R three as we're developing them. We, the S R three funds are, I believe, if I remember right, are as much as all the others combined, pretty much close to it. But we thought we'd just give you a very brief overview because I know that there's a lot in the news about this. The original CFR funds were $4.3 million, they needed to be spent by this, this coming September 30th and we spent vast majority of those on the LEAK program, that was the summer program before school started back in August. We spent a whole lot on PP and E and COVID, COVID, COVID-related cleaning services and hotspots. We spent a little bit on a couple of other things, but that was the majority of those funds. The S R one CARES Act, we're spending, that's needs to be, that's about $4 million and it needs to be spent by September 30th, '22. Also, these were all, they also all had particular deadlines of when the application needed to be done and whether you could spend funds before or after that application was submitted, the timelines were, are still headaches. We spent, we're spending on S R one, healthroom assistance, special ed teacher and assistant in technology and COVID-related cleaning services. S R two, we're in that now, we're spending some of that, the major, it's at $17.1 million, it will need to be spent by 9, 30, 23 and the vast majority of that is SOAR. When we first started talking about SOAR, that's our summer program, extended learning program, every, at least some of us foolishly thought that that was just kind of like summer school on steroids. It's school. It's school. It's, we're spending about $10 million or so on the program, the counselors, bus drivers, everything, it's regular, basically regular school during the summer. And we plan to spend that for summer '21, this coming summer, next month, and summer '22. S R three is about, I think it's about $28 million. It, we, it's the largest funding. And again, each one has designated pots of uses. You can use these 12 uses, you can use these three uses. You can use these three uses. Each one is slightly different or expanded. In S R three, we need to put a plan together by August the 24th on how we plan to use those, those funds. We will need, and this one's a little bit different than others, we will need public, we will need to demonstrate that we've encouraged the public to give us input on that plan for S R three spending. And we'll submit that by the 8/24/21. And I believe that's, use those funds through September 30, '24, I believe. So I just wanted to kind of give you a real brief overview. We can have, it, S R is worthy of a workshop of its own. And so we didn't want to try to do that tonight as well, but I wanted to give you a brief overview. And if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Board members, questions, comments? Ms. Agostini?
Mr. Chair, yeah, and I appreciate the just brief overview of it. I would like to see at the workshop more detail in terms of, you know, almost a line-by-line type of item of how much we've spent and what's left and where we plan to go.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Dr. Davis, that completes my presentation tonight, if there are no more questions. Thank you, Dr. Miley. Thank you, Shelley. Appreciate you for, for your information and for the updates. Thank you.
All right, um, yeah, thank you very much, both of you, for the, the information. I know it, it seems simplified on the presentation on the screen, but there's a lot of work that goes in to that final product. So thank you. With that, I will accept the motion for, for adjournment. Ms. Agostini? Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? All in favor, if you'll raise your right hand and on the phone say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. We're now adjourned.